Okay, hello everyone. Actually, I do apologize for the delay of this session and also probably it will be preceded by recording. We are living uncertain world, if you see. So, my name is Jiyoung Kim. I'm working as an institute for unification education in the Ministry of Unification. It is my pleasure to join to this Korea Global Forum for Peace 2020. I hope this session contributed to construction of the peace on the Korean Peninsula. In this session, we're gonna discuss about UN sanctions against North Korea and denuclearization on the Korean Peninsula. I will moderate this session with the key speaker, Professor Thomas Beestaker. Hello, Professor Beestaker. It's my honor to discuss with you for this session. Before we start to have our key speaker's presentation, please let me introduce Professor Thomas Beestaker. Professor Beestaker is working at the Department International Security and Conflict Studies and Director for Policy Research at the Graduate Institute of International and Developmental Studies, Geneva. Professor Beestaker is author and editor of ten books, including State Sovereignty as a Social Construct in 1996, The Emergency of Private Authority in Global Governance 2002, and the last one is Target Sanction: The Impact and Effectiveness of UN Actions 2016, which is related to our topic today. He published on global governance, international organizations, and on institutional mechanism of global governance in the UN systems. For the operation of this session, I will probably give forty minutes for your lecture and have a Q&amp;A session in the remaining time. Probably, in the previous plan, probably the audience who are watching this session, they're gonna leave some question, but because of a technical problem, I'm gonna raise some questions to your lectures. So, please welcome Professor Thomas Beestaker.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Thank you for that introduction and as well as thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm sorry that we can't have this conversation in person, but these are, of course, unusual times. So, let me proceed directly to my presentation and I think if I can load it here. We all have to get accustomed to unusual times and unusual reliance on technology, but hopefully this will be clear. So what I'd like to do is speak with you about the idea of linking sanctions relief to denuclearization on the Korean Peninsula. And I'd like to give you a sense of the outline of what I'd like to cover with you this afternoon. First, I'll talk a little bit about international sanctions. It's a subject that most people, most people don't like sanctions. I'll say more about that and why. But I'd like to proceed from there to talk in particular about the nature of the UN security sanctions, UN Security Council sanctions currently on the DPRK, particularly their relatively exceptional nature with regard to other UN sanctions activities. And I'll say something about the US maximum pressure approach that has been taken by the Trump administration in recent years. I'll continue with brief references to, it's very significant, I'm not departing from it because of its lack of significance, but I'll mention the unintended consequences of the sanctions. And then I'll refer to some recent research I've conducted with colleagues at the UN University and at Swiss Peace on the relationship between sanctions and mediation. I'm doing that because it has implications for discussions about sanctions and negotiation. I'll continue by giving you a typology that I've developed of different types of sanctions relief. And then I'll continue with the more detailed slides discussing the relationship between sanctions relief and denuclearization and a few comments on prospects for the future. So, there's a lot to cover, but I'll try to do it in a clear and fairly concise manner so we have some time for at least a discussion with our moderator. So let me proceed from there. First, international sanctions. Well, everybody, nobody likes sanctions, actually. I study sanctions, I find them infinitely fascinating, but I wouldn't say I normatively like the idea of applying these kinds of restrictive measures for different ends. And the reason people don't like sanctions is in part because they interfere with trade, they interfere with finance, they interfere with the individual's right to travel and to have free movement, and they also frequently are associated with negative humanitarian consequences, not necessarily because of the design of the sanctions, but often because of their over-implementation. Another reason people don't like sanctions is because in frequent cases, there are violations. One of the innovations of sanctions in the last twenty years has been the introduction of individual targeting, targeting of individuals or corporate entities. But that oftentimes raises serious questions about the due process rights of individuals and whether or not the idea of sanctioning someone doesn't really give them fair notification, access, hearing, effective remedy in cases. So there are a whole series of reasons why people don't like sanctions. And then most people say, "Well, they don't work, do they? Why do we employ sanctions?" It turns out, when you look carefully at different sanctions regimes and look carefully at the different episodes of sanctions regimes, we find there are occasions when they are in fact effective, either coercing a change in behavior, constraining an actor, or sending an effective normative signal. But they're not overwhelmingly effective and that's certainly, our research results don't show that they're any more effective than most of the other studies that have been conducted on them. But they're increasingly used, sanctions are increasingly used by states, by regional organizations, and by international organizations. And I think one of the main reasons for this is that oftentimes, from the standpoint of a policy practitioner, sanctions are the best option, given the alternatives. The alternatives of simply saying, "We disagree with this policy or practice," or an escalation that leads to the application or the use of force, threats or use of force. So, given the alternative, we often find organizations and states are turning to the application of sanctions. I mentioned at the outset that the DPRK sanctions are exceptional, and I'd like to put this in a comparative perspective for you. First, the DPRK sanctions are without question the most extensive United Nations sanctions regime in place today. In fact, they're approximating comprehensive measures. We sometimes hear people say, "Well, they are comprehensive." They're actually technically not comprehensive, but as you'll see in a moment, when I gave you the list of different types of restrictions being applied, you will see there's very little that is not being sanctioned. So they're approximating, but not equivalent to a comprehensive trade and financial embargo on the country. The reason I say they're approximating comprehensive measures is because there are three very broad, and we call them non-discriminating measures, the restrictions on finance, petroleum, not just petroleum, but all petroleum-related products, and the transportation restrictions. And we call these non-discriminating because they're, while they're sectorally targeted, these are sectors that affect the entire population, either directly or indirectly. And so that's why these measures are likely to have very, very broad effects throughout the economy and throughout the country as a whole. In some of our most recent research, we've been looking at how discriminating are different sanctions regimes by their design. And when we've done, we've developed a scale, of course, it's a thing social scientists do, scholars do, develop a scale to talk about how discriminating are different UN sanctions. We have a scale where one is extremely targeted, just on individuals, in some cases four individuals in the case of Sudan, or eight in the case of Mali, to the other end of the continuum, a number six, which would mean basically comprehensive trade and financial embargo. We think that the DPRK sanctions are at level five on this six-point scale at this point. In fact, fourteen of the fifteen UN sanctions regimes are between one and three on this scale. The average is 2.3. The DPRK sanctions are at level five. And in addition to this, the UN sanctions are accompanied by EU and US autonomous measures. So you have a very, very broad sanctions regime in place in the DPRK. And this next slide will give you comparative perspective, putting the DPRK sanctions in comparative perspective. I know the print is rather small, so it's rather difficult to see all the details on the scale, but if you think of the blue and purple and green as being at the low end of the scale, one through three, and the red, orange, and yellow being at the high end of the scale, red being comprehensive, you can see in comparative perspective of the fifteen ongoing UN sanctions regimes, virtually all of them are between one and three, and the exceptional case is the DPRK. You can see it moving from purple to green to yellow to now orange and approximating comprehensive measures, just to put the sanctions in a comparative perspective from the standpoint of UN sanctions regimes. Now, sanctions regimes evolve over time, which is why we, in the previous slide, you can see we look at segments of time. Each one of those represents a set or type of sanctions being applied. And in the case of the DPRK, we've seen an evolution from initial set of sanctions that were largely related to weapons of mass destruction. This is a set of sanctions applied between 2006 and 2012. The one exception to that, of course, would be the sanctions on luxury goods and items, but that's largely focused on the WMD program. Between 2013 and 2015, however, financial sanctions and transportation-related sanctions were introduced. Now, some of these were conditional measures, where they weren't a blanket ban or restriction, but they were conditioned. If you had reason to suspect there was a transportation of prohibited items and goods, you were not just authorized, but you were required to board, seize, confiscate the material. So that's a fairly significant increase in the second phase. Broad sectoral measures were introduced in 2016, and these were directly in response to the detonation of nuclear weapons by North Korea during this period. This is also when the petroleum imports were added to the list, coal exports, one of the major foreign exchange sources for North Korea, were added to the list. And from 2017, you have all of the above plus restrictions on fishing, remittances from foreign workers. So you have a significant increase over time in the number of sectors being affected, sectors of activity, not just economic sectors, but also others, as I'll say in a moment. So, the scope of the current measures against North Korea include, first, individual sanctions. These are usually in our category one, of fairly targeted, fairly discriminating. In the case of DPRK, we have sanctions on eighty individuals, seventy-five corporate entities, mostly firms or departments of government, sixty-six vessels with more recommended by the panel of experts, the UN-appointed, the Security Council's appointed panel of experts. So we have quite a few individual sanctions in comparative terms, but there are also non-economic sanctions in place. There are sanctions on diplomatic activities, sanctions on arms imports and arms exports. I mentioned already restrictions on luxury goods and, of course, on nuclear materials. Then there are the sectoral sanctions I've mentioned, fishing, labor, textiles, coal, non-discriminating sanctions, finance, oil, and transportation. So by the time you look at this list, it's a fairly, fairly broad regime. The only thing that's really left out, one of the more striking things, is tourism, but then that requires a certain degree of financing, and it's actually very difficult. And now, of course, in the days of COVID, it's, the country has imposed a embargo on itself in a sense and closed itself off for understandable reasons. So even that sector is no longer viable. So that gives you a sense of the scope of the measures and how exceptional they actually are. Now, in comparative perspective, one question is, why focus on the UN sanctions? Why are UN sanctions so important? And here, I think it's important to look comparatively. The DPRK regime is very different from the Iran sanctions regime, because in Iran, the US sanctions predominated. There's no question, it's the US unilateral sanctions, and certainly, once it left the JCPOA, the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action, in 2018, and then began applying new autonomous measures or unilateral sanctions on Iran, that is really the central focus. UN sanctions are important in the case of DPRK, because at least until the last couple of years, they were implemented relatively significantly by both Russia and China. And China in particular, given the fact that it's the most important trading partner for North Korea, is quite a significant actor and player in all of this. And those of us looking at this case, look in detail at the degree of implementation by China. That becomes a very significant factor in terms of gauging the consequences or impacts or effectiveness of the measures. The US also, because of its somewhat unique bilateral negotiation at the very highest level during the Trump administration, is not applying the kind of extraterritorial pressure over the DPRK on financial institutions outside the US jurisdiction. It's done this in the case of Iran, quite, almost spectacularly, in the case, at least from the perspective of financial institutions operating from Europe. But this has not been the case in DPRK, at least not up to this point. But, it's applied what it describes as maximum pressure. And I will argue later that I think this particular strategy may have reached its limits. And the reason for that is because over the past two years, there's been an erosion of consensus at the United Nations Security Council, and both Russia and China are, even in last December, crafted a resolution that provided some sanctions relief for DPRK. So it's clear that some of the major powers are, that the consensus has broken down, and the US maximum pressure therefore, I think, has reached certain limits. Now, that being said, so this is why UN sanctions, relatively speaking, are so important in this particular context. The US maximum pressure approach has some distinctive characteristics, and it's one of the things that makes the sanctions even broader in impact than their design. Now, the first point I want to emphasize here is that in the period of 2016, 2017, the US was actually the co-pen holder with China. And holding the pen is significant, because if you hold the pen, that means you draft the initial version of the Security Council resolution. And the power of the pen holder, I oftentimes hold up my pen when I emphasize this, the power of the pen holder is you can put things in the resolution that legitimize subsequent actions that you take unilaterally. And the fact is, from our comparative research on UN sanctions, we found that three countries hold the pen on about ninety percent of UN-targeted sanctions, the United States, France, and the UK. So the so-called P3 are frequently the pen holders. The unique case, however, in the case of DPRK, was that the US was the joint or co-pen holder with China in the construction of the key resolutions that really rapidly expanded the sanctions in 2016 and 2017. Now, the US also frequently will apply what it calls additional measures. These are unilateral sanctions that go beyond the UN restrictions. And by doing this, and by claiming the extraterritorial jurisdiction of US unilateral measures, means that the US will engage in the application of secondary sanctions, which can involve substantial fines, heavy fines, for firms that violate it. So this means that the US, in part, it's in a unique position. The world is still basically, the reserve currency of choice is the US dollar. Access to the US correspondent banking system is absolutely essential for financial institutions globally. And as a result, what happens is the fear of secondary sanctions from the US and the application in the past of heavy fines, one against Ben-Pe Pariba in France, over nine billion dollars in fines. That makes the financial sector quite nervous, and they engage in what we call financial de-risking. That means they're basically deciding, this transaction involves North Korea, it's too risky for us, we're not going to engage in any transaction. So internally, even though they're not forced to sanction, banks will engage in a de-risking activity that in fact creates, what has in fact resulted in the DPRK being cut off virtually from formal international banking system in its entirety. Excuse me a second. So, that's the addition of not only broad sanctions, but the combination of those sanctions with the US maximum pressure approach, and why the US is uniquely able to apply, basically extend its unilateral measures on a global scale. Now, this undoubtedly results in unintended, undesirable humanitarian, very broad humanitarian effects. In fact, there have been recent calls, even at the highest levels, by the UN Secretary General, to talk about the importance of easing sanctions in some ways to address the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. The sanctions, first of all, let me just say, are not the only source of these broader humanitarian effects. They contribute, of course, they exacerbate, but they often exacerbate other policy practices that pre-exist. So, it's easy to blame sanctions, everybody loves to hate sanctions, as I mentioned at the outset, but they oftentimes are not designed in a way that are intended to create this. In fact, the whole idea of moving toward targeted sanctions in the early 2000s was the idea that you would actually minimize the unintended humanitarian effects that were so broad in the case of comprehensive sanctions, in the case of Iraq in the 1990s. But if you're dealing with a highly controlled command economy with built-in inefficiencies, there are other problems, and the sanctions simply exacerbate other practices. I have, there have been serious reports of food crisis within the DPRK, significant challenges in access to fertilizer and continued crop production. There, of course, is the COVID-19 pandemic, which is affecting everyone in the world, but in fact, potentially could be very, very dramatic within the DPRK. And we found that there are challenges even for UN agencies operating in the DPRK. In fact, there's been some recent creative thinking on the part of members of the UN Secretariat to try to come up with ways of at least getting cash into the country for the operations of UN relief agencies. But again, the access to formal banking channels being virtually cut off means that people are resorting to things like cash courier systems, which are, have their own risks and consequences. So, this is, these are not, arguably not intended humanitarian effects, but we have to acknowledge that the sanctions exacerbate other practices and that in fact, the situation is quite serious in the country. Excuse me, that being said, I want to talk about the potential of UN sanctions. And that may seem like a paradox, actually. How can we talk about sanctions as being a potential for conflict resolution rather than the main source of the problem? And here, I want to sort of turn sanctions on their head a bit. They're typically considered by many as punishments, but those of us who work on sanctions actually say, "Well, actually, they're not, they can be perceived that way, but they're intended to be preventive measures. They're intended to prevent the proliferation of weapons of mass destruction. They're intended to prevent the ongoing conflicts in different places. They're an attempt to try to constrain actors from engaging in certain kinds of prescribed activities." So, they're not just punishments, they're typically preventive measures. And another typical comment about sanctions is that they're not giving room for negotiation and diplomacy, but in our research on sanctions, what we found, or that sanctions exist between words and war, or something I mentioned at the outset, what we've found in our comparative research on UN sanctions, that the sanctions are never the only instrument being applied. They're never used in isolation. Sanctions are always combined with other measures, most often with negotiation, most often with negotiation or mediation. So we find that in ninety-four percent of the cases, sanctions are being applied while negotiations and mediation are underway. So it's not a choice of talking or applying sanctions. In fact, they're typically being applied in the same environment, by the same actors. So there may be UN, or in this case, and of course, in the case of the Korean Peninsula, are the six-party talks, so negotiations involving major concerned states in the region and globally. So, as a result of this, a couple of years ago, I began a project with some colleagues from the UN University, the Center for Policy Research, previously based in Tokyo, but now in New York, and we started what we called the Sanctions and Mediation Project, the SMP Project. And what we did was looked at the relationship between UN sanctions and UN negotiations and the UN-sponsored negotiations, and we found a mix in terms of the consequences, and I'll say more about that in a moment. But one of the findings from this work, although we're focused on mediation, which is, of course, third-party neutral, accepted by both parties, but we found there are implications for the DPRK-US Republic of Korea ongoing sets of bilateral and multilateral negotiations, because of course, the negotiations have been between DPRK, the Republic of Korea, as well as between DPRK and the US. Now typically, in this research, we found that mediators want to stay away from sanctions. They distance themselves, they say, "We'll interfere with our impartiality between the two parties. We don't want to avoid association with punishments, coercive instruments." And so mediators are even advised by the Mediation Support Unit to, in a sense, be cautious, keep your distance from the application of these restrictive coercive measures. And sanctions can indeed complicate. We found a classic case in 2015, in the case of Yemen, where the very day that a UN mediator reached an agreement between the Hadi government and the Houthis, the UN Security Council applied sanctions on the Houthis on one side of the conflict. And the negotiations, the interim settlement fell apart, and of course, the war is ongoing to this day. So there's no question that sanctions can complicate mediation efforts. But we've also found situations in cases where sanctions can complement negotiations and mediation efforts. And if used in a certain judicious way, and in a way that actually enables the mediator to get a quick decision from the Security Council, which isn't always possible, there are ways in which sanctions can actually be used as, one might describe it as, I don't want to quite use the word coercive diplomacy, but they can be used, and the threats of sanctions can be quite effective in certain phases of mediation or negotiation. And so we produced this report a couple of years ago, not, just a year ago, actually, in February 2019, called UN Sanctions and Mediation: Establishing Evidence to Inform Practice, and there are my co-authors there with me on this project. And it's out of that project that I've been thinking about the use of sanctions relief for not just mediation efforts, but for negotiations, and this, of course, has relevance for the situation on the Korean Peninsula. So what I want to do is talk about not applying more sanctions, not applying maximum pressure, but relieving sanctions, but using sanctions relief as an instrument, as a productive policy instrument. Because in the past, and from our comparative work, both in the Sanctions and Mediation Project and the work we've done historically on UN sanctions, we found examples when the suspension of sanction, not the lifting, just the temporary suspension, or the promise of additional exemptions, can actually break deadlocks in negotiations. For example, Libya in the 1990s. The Libyan government was accused of state sponsorship of terrorism. There were two jetliners brought down, a Pan Am flight over Scotland, a UTA flight over Niger. And part of the deal to get the turning over of suspects for prosecution in a trial in a Scottish court in The Hague, the deal was a suspension of the sanctions on Libya, particularly the oil-related sanctions on Libya. So we found that the sanctions weren't lifted until 2003, but the suspension took place in the late 1990s. And the suspension was on the release of the suspects for criminal trial and prosecution in an outside court. In the case of the former Yugoslavia, former President Milosevic agreed to go to Dayton, Ohio, where the agreement that really resolved the core parts of the conflict, not all of the conflict, the Dayton Agreement, the deal was a suspension of the US oil embargo on Serbia and Montenegro. So again, suspension of an existing sanction triggered, that led to Milosevic's agreement to go to Dayton, and eventually, we had the Dayton Accords. Afghanistan, we've seen Gomar Hekmajer and his breaking with the Taliban, based on the promise that he could be delisted, there's an individual and his group, a corporate entity, who were formally delisted by the UN, now recognize the Afghan government as legitimate, broke with the Taliban. So again, a case where the promise, he wasn't delisted, it was simply, if you do the following things, recognize the government, we will take you off the list. And then finally, and quite significantly, Iran with the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action, Program of Action, which despite its challenges, of course, which are many and many today, unquestionable that Iran was motivated to see an end of the United Nations sanctions regime. It's technically, I would argue, still under a form of UN restrictive measures, but it's not part of the UN architecture on sanctions. So that in fact, that was a very key component, the whole idea of the multi-stage lifting of different types of sanctions over time, built into the agreement. Again, sanctions relief is what made, I think, the JCPOA possible. So sanctions aren't just always an impediment, but they're a potential tool for conflict resolution. And this is now where I want to take the argument to apply it more directly to the Korean Peninsula. Korean Peninsula. UN sanctions are targeted, so use them, use them. You can ratchet them up, as you have historically, but you can also ratchet them back down. So when I think about sanctions and bargaining, sanctions are not an end in themselves. And sometimes policy practitioners lose sight of this fact, but, but sanctions are not an end in and of themselves. They're, they're a tool that, that should be used in pursuit of some larger purpose. And in fact, they're more effective oftentimes as a bargaining instrument than as a tool of pressure. Sanction suspensions can be more effective than the initial imposition of sanctions themselves. So the idea that you're suspending them may give you more leverage than actually threatening to apply more. Suspension carries also a powerful, powerful symbolic value. It was very clear in the case of Iran that this was a very powerful motivator. Iran wanted to get off the UN sanctions list. And so I would say, and think of employing a calibrated tit-for-tat strategy. You do this, we'll do this, you do this, you do that. And, and try to think it through as much in advance as possible, but you one, of course, has to remain flexible in the application. So calibrated sanctions relief for tangible denuclearization measures. And that's basically my broad proposal, but let me go beyond that into some, giving some detail. And begin by suggesting there are many different types of sanctions relief that can be applied in a conflict situation. And I'll start, I'll give you a continuum since I, again, I think in analytical terms about these issues. The first thing that can be done is not the lifting of sanctions. The lifting of sanctions is way down the scale. Before you even think about lifting sanctions, you can voluntarily relax the implementation of the non-bonded binding measures. So for example, the US could simply say, we're not going to pursue maximum pressure any longer. We're not going to pursue financial institutions. We're not going to extend our unilateral, some kind of voluntary relaxation. And it could come from multiple sources. That's the first thing that, that can be done. The second, you may have measures in place, but you could add exemptions. Why not introduce a series of COVID-19 exemptions? Just make that uniform across the global system. We're facing a global challenge, a global pandemic. We're all facing it in all countries. Any country that's outside of, of, of the, of the efforts to try to control the pandemic is, is a threat to every other country. So there's no reason why you couldn't simply create a set of humanitarian exemptions linked to COVID-19 and add those, and just include them across the board. DPRK is unique in sanctions regimes because it's introduced caps. Now frequently, when there's a sectoral sanction, you ban everything in the sector, all petroleum, all coal. But notice in the DPRK case, there are caps. You can import a certain amount of petroleum, up to, up to a certain amount. You can export a certain amount of coal, up to a certain amount. So if you have the caps in place, adjust them. You could move them up, you could allow more petroleum for a period of time. Again, these are forms of sanctions, not the elimination or lifting of the measures, it's adjusting the restrictions themselves. Or if you have a sectoral prohibition, simply introduce caps. So let's say on foreign workers and the remittances coming from foreign workers, introduce caps in terms of how many foreign workers are allowed. So not to prohibit them outright, as was done technically at the end of last year, but in fact, introduce caps to these sectoral prohibitions, another form of, of relief or adjustment. You could suspend measures. Here's where lifting is, is sort of the last stage. And I mentioned already in the case of Libya in the nineteen, late 1990s, 98, it was actually the suspension was initially a term-based, you can have a term-based expansion, suspension, which is the equivalent of, of functional equivalent of SNAP Act. You simply say, we're suspending the existing measures for one year, that they automatically come back in place after that term is up. Or we can extend them for another year. So you could have a term listed, a term-based suspension, or you could have more generously, an open-ended suspension, as was the case of Libya 98, where they introduced an open-ended suspension without a term limit to it. So there are different forms of, of suspensions that can be considered. Then of course, as I've already mentioned, in the case of Afghanistan, you can have selective delistings. You could delist an individual, delist a key firm, delist a key family member. There are ways of, of sending signals through delistings and then finally lifting. And you can lift not all sanctions at once, but one sector after another and gradually move in a continuum. So there are all sorts of different types of sanctions relief. And now if we think about this typology and the situation in the Korean Peninsula, think about the possibilities. You have many different types of relief, as I've just outlined, and you have many different types of sanctions, as I demonstrated in the previous slide. So in this case, there are so many possibilities actually for using sanctions relief in a calibrated tit-for-tat negotiation strategy. Many, many ways to link sanctions relief to denuclearization on the Korean Peninsula. And this is a contrast to most UN sanctions regimes, because most regimes simply have a travel ban, asset freeze, maybe an arms embargo. And that doesn't give you very much to work with, but in the case of DPRK, there's a lot to work with, both in terms of the degree, the scope of the sanctions, but also the different types of relief that could be contemplated. You have, most cases, as I say, in, in other cases, fewer sanctions in place, less room for linking to negotiation. So I want to conclude this with a, just somewhat schematic, but a set of, it's not, it's not a fully worked out plan, but it's, it's some thinking that we, I think, should engage in, in ways of trying to think about stages of negotiation. Keeping the broader goal of, of denuclearization on the Korean Peninsula as, as the goal, and ultimately reunification, of course. But in fact, starting with, and I'm, I'm, here I'm based on, I'm making a reference to the International Crisis Group's report in 2018, where they laid out stages of negotiation. And what my colleague David Lance from Swiss Peace and I have been doing is thinking about what types of sanctions relief could be linked to these different stages. So we, we credit them with the idea of the stages and the slides that are following. Well, I'll present them now. First, what types of relief would be useful for creating a conducive environment? What would be useful next to launch formal negotiations? Not just the, the summatry between, between, between President Kim and, and President Trump, but beyond that, formal ongoing negotiations? What would be required to produce an interim agreement? What would be required to produce a second agreement with IAEA inspections and, and the Comprehensive Test Ban Treaty signing? What would be necessary for a comprehensive final agreement? And then finally, the implementation of the agreement? So thinking about these six stages. So what I'll do just as, as a way of conclusion now is, is go through each one of these and mention some ideas, just to put the ideas out there to get people thinking more creatively, rather than just saying, ah, sanctions don't work, let's get rid of the sanctions. No, let's actually think of creative ways of linking sanctions to denuclearization. So the first stage, and this is arguably where we are now. There are things that have been done, there's a lot of, there are a lot of things being done privately, quietly, in different forms of, of multi-track diplomacy, but there are gestures that could be taken to create a more conducive environment. I'm not going to say these will automatically work, but here are some ideas. First, unilateral gestures on both sides. DPRK has declared a moratorium, it's declared the moratorium over, it could re-declare its moratorium on nuclear and long-range missile testing. That would be a useful unilateral gesture. The US, as I mentioned earlier, could declare an end to the maximum pressure approach, trying to force change with increased pressure, saying we're going to back off from this. So there, there are ideas, you have some unilateral gestures on both sides, mostly just words, but words followed by actions, of course, are absolutely key. Second, I've already mentioned, facilitate emergency COVID-19 relief in, through any channels possible. Make sure that DPRK doesn't suffer unnecessarily and that it's able to get the kinds of supplies and equipment it needs to deal with, with what all countries are currently facing globally. Another gesture, create a safe banking channel for humanitarian actors. Simply say, all right, transactions through these banks for these actors, for these humanitarian purposes are not going to be subject to restrictions, potential penalties and fines. So create a safe banking channel for humanitarian actors working in the country. And invite the DPRK to not be a member, not be a beneficiary, but to observe, participate in regional development bank meetings, get an idea of if, if the, if President Kim is so interested in, in development, look comparatively what other countries within the region had done comparatively in, in drawing on the resources of regional and other international bank resources. So invite them in as observer capacity. These are all gestures that could be taken to create an environment that's conducive for serious negotiations. Launching negotiations, I would argue, would take more dramatic first steps, particularly in terms of sanctions relief. The first thing would be to limit the application of US secondary sanctions, just to go back to the 2006-12 period, the focus on nuclear and ballistic missile components, not the huge expansion after, after 2016 and 17, but focus on, on limiting the application of secondary sanctions, but apply them in cases of violation of the ban on nuclear and ballistic missile components. Scale back the export, coal export restrictions. That would be significant in terms of revenue, finance is, is a key concern, I believe, although I, I don't have a lot of detailed knowledge of the North Korean economy or thinking, but nonetheless, this would be significant, I think, in terms of foreign exchange revenue. Increase the cap on petroleum export, exports and sort of imports into, into, into North Korea. Here, I'm just saying, make a virtue out of necessity, because neither China nor Russia are enforcing the existing cap anyway, so you might as well increase it, it doesn't cost you that much. Introduce some term limited, time limited suspensions of some of the sectoral measures. I believe this was put on the table in Stockholm last year by the US in the case of textiles, that there would be a suspension of the measures for a period, it could be a year, it could be 18 months, it could be two years. Offer some financial relaxation, because unless you have financing, you're not going to be able to continue to, to carry on the other types of imports and export activities. So some kinds of financial relaxation. And do what the US and the Europeans did at the outset in the case of the signing of the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action with Iran. Offer public declarations of no new sanctions. The Obama administration did that, it wasn't able to carry it through to the Trump administration, but that's a different story. Nonetheless, again, public declaration of no new sanctions could be a way of launching formal negotiations. By the way, the further I get into this, the more it becomes sort of guesswork, because these things would have to be done, as I said, step by step in a calibrated way. But reaching agreement to consolidate a freeze on testing and sign of the Comprehensive Test Ban Treaty, you could begin by easing military contact restrictions. You could engage in selective delistings outside of the nuclear domain. You could raise the caps again, you could introduce some additional time limited suspensions. You could suspend the sport and cultural restrictions. So again, we've seen how effectively that was used just a couple of years ago during the Olympics. You could suspend restrictions on DPRK receipt of international financial institution assistance for one year, possibly longer. So these are all ideas of rewarding concessions, genuine developments on denuclearization that, that could be traced. And then introduce multi-year infrastructure development plans, which of course, South Korea would be eager to participate in, I'm sure, if, if only the North were willing to allow it. Reaching an agreement on inspections, ratification of the CTBT, again, more suspensions, open-ended suspensions could be used to cover all the commodity restrictions. You could have selective termination of some sanctions, you could ban, the ban on sports culture, additional delistings, remove DPRK from the US sponsors of terrorism list, a lot of things that could be done at, at a later stage. With the signing of an agreement, complete delisting of the non-nuclear designations, convert the term-based suspensions to open-ended suspensions, terminate diplomatic and some sectoral sanctions, now you're lifting finally, and provide financial and technical assistance for conversion of nuclear, because of course, North Korea has significant technical knowledge of nuclear materials. It now needs technical assistance for the conversion of weapons of potential mass destruction to peaceful applications of nuclear power and energy. And that would require additional infrastructure development support. So in expanding educational exchange programs. So these are all things that could be done upon the signing of a comprehensive agreement. Once there's full implementation, then you can consider the termination, certainly all of the non-nuclear sanctions, schedule a date for the termination of the nuclear sanctions. That's exactly what was done in the JCPOA with Iran. Terminate the unilateral sanctions, sign a formal peace treaty, establish full diplomatic relations and reunification. These are, as I say, the further we go out, the, the more this becomes, I don't want to say imaginary, but it would, you would have to follow some logic. But what I'm trying to lay out is, is a logic that suggests that if you go step by step, you could actually result in using the sanctions in this way, and I think in a constructive way, to try to achieve a jointly shared goal globally of, of the denuclearization of the Korean Peninsula. So my conclusion is a coordinated and carefully calibrated tit-for-tat approach should be developed and constant adjustments will be needed. It's, it's not going to follow this very neat schema I just laid out of step by step, but I'm just trying to think creatively about the varieties of the different types of sanctions relief. And given the number of sanctions in place, the number of things that, that could be contemplated. And this would require substantial moves on all sides, I say both sides, but thinking of US and DPRK primarily, but also significant involvement from the Republic of Korea as well. And maximum pressure, as I said earlier, I believe has reached its limits. I, I think there are still advocates of this policy in Washington, but I, I, I do not subscribe to their views. It's, it's actually akin to what Norwegian scholar in the 1960s, talking about Rhodesia, called the naive theory of sanctions. And the naive theory of sanctions, this is Johan Galtung's classic work in world politics in 1967, when he said, the naive theory of sanctions is the more you ratchet up the pressure, eventually the other side will give and cave and give in to all your demands. And he said fundamentally, that's naive, and I agree. So the challenge really is when to offer sanctions relief, how extensive it should be, and what kind of timing, how, how calibrated it should be as one proceeds. The political feasibility of this, the current moment, may not be propitious for, for these proposals, I'm well aware of that. There's significant political uncertainty in the US at the moment, so we don't know the outcome of the election yet. Every, I think the whole world is, is watching in this case and waiting for the outcome, because I think it will be consequential in a number of different ways. There are of course also uncertainties about the DPRK's willingness to resume talks and in fact, the, the demolition of the, of the joint north-south building recently. I mean, this does not bode well for the idea of, of willingness to engage in talking about denuclearization again. But if we don't think these things through in advance, we won't be prepared if and when conditions on the ground change. And so I guess on that hopeful and somewhat optimistic note, I'll, I'll conclude. Thank you for your attention in this presentation.
Thank you very much for your comprehensive and creative presentations. Actually, to save my time, to save our session's time, I'm going to just wrap up four points of your presentation. First of all, you explained the scale and the characteristics of international sanctions against North Korea through comparative perspective. In particular, you explained and focus on the current scale of sanctions against North Korea by separating areas such as personal and the non-economic sanctions. It also points out that recent COVID-19 and natural disaster can cause unintended humanitarian issues such as food shortage and the lack of medical supplies. Second point is, you made, unlike Iran, where US sanctions were leading the maximum pressure of the United States is limited because of the lack of consultation with Russia and China. The thirdly, you addressed that the sanction should always be designed with other policy measures such as negotiation or mediation, which is most interesting point, what I understand. The lastly, the action suspensions or promotion of option can break deadlocks. Libya in 1990s, Yugoslavia and Afghanistan model can be expected of this argument. To extend with this argument, North Korea case should also be designed with bilateral or multilateral negotiation or mediation. This is kind of a point, what I understood from your presentation. To continue with this summary, I would like to raise some questions to your presentation. The first question is, the recently, the Trump administration preferred bilateral negotiation with North Korea. This is what we called is top-down. This is what we called is top-down approach rather than multilateral approach. But on the other hand, Biden administration is expected to prefer multilateral negotiation with North Korea based on the U.S. sanctions against North Korea. What type of negotiation do you think will be more conducive in resolving the issue of denuclearization of the Korean Peninsula, along with the current U.N. sanctions against North Korea?
Shall I answer it right away, or do you want to pose other questions?
Probably to save time, I'm gonna give you more questions, and then you can just answer to my question. My second question is, the Trump administration has withdrawn from the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Actions and Iranian denuclearization deals. European negotiator like France and Germany, however, declared they would maintain the action plan with Iran. Can this negotiation be successful without the participation of the United States? How does the professor forces this denuclearization negotiation in Iran? And how do you think the case of Iran will affect North Korea's denuclearization negotiation in the future? This is kind of a perspective issues. The last question I would like to raise is, you argued sanctions relief would have an effect on North Korea's denuclearization. The United States and North Korea need mutual concessions to lift the U.N. sanctions, from my understanding. So the main focus of the last round of negotiation was to negotiate the inspection of North Korea's Yongbyon base and the lifting of sanction against North Korea. Probably sanction relief from your understanding. To include a snapback policy, if you suggest any examples from past experience, which one is kind of a example to North Korean denuclearization issues? Thank you. This is my three questions to your presentation.
Thanks. Thanks very much. There's a good questions and a nice follow on. I also appreciate very much your summary of the main points, so I appreciate that as well. First, I think I talked about the uncertainty at the very, very end, about where the U.S. is is going at this point in time. I would anticipate that a Biden administration would be significantly more multilateral in its approach, and that's across the board. I think there would be efforts somewhat parallel to to what the Obama administration did with the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action in that period. It's quite significant. It's not just, even even though a lot of it boiled down to the U.S. and Iran, I've talked to people who participated in the in the discussions, some of which were held here in Geneva. But it's it's to the main, that was the main bilateral dynamic, U.S. Iran. But the U.S. worked very closely with getting Europe on board before it reached the initial agreement in 2013, which led eventually to the 2015 JCPOA. So I think there would be a strong tendency to think multilaterally, and any realist would would look at the situation today and say, look, China and Russia are already introducing a resolution on their own calling, I think somewhat naively, I might say, for for sanctions relief without any kind of concessions on the other side. That's a different different matter, but some kind of multilateral engagement to return to the six party talks in some form, I would anticipate that as as an alternative. If Trump is reelected, well, I don't know what to say. That's I don't want to be too excessively political about this. I think the whole world is waiting, in a sense. Now, I will give I will give Trump credit for just one thing, perhaps, and that is audacity, the willingness to go, because I'm I'm sure the overwhelming advisors internally in the U.S. government were opposed to the idea of sitting down one on one with with Kim and and starting. But I I think that kind of audacity and and thinking outside of the the box of of Washington had its its moment, had its creativity, had its, as I say, audacity. But I think what had to be built underneath it on both sides is is technical discussions, because you don't begin with a summit. You you end with a summit once all the details have been worked out and you declare victory. So in that sense, it was a very, very risky strategy, but it at least created some fresh thinking and and I think did create the possibility that we could be talking about this in in a serious way. So in that sense, I'll give them credit, but where they would go in the future with this, it's hard to say. It's potential. I mean, I don't want to speculate too much about that, but let me just make the main point about the multilateral bilateral difference between the the approaches that would take place. With regard to the JCPOA, can it continue without the U.S.? The answer is probably no. And again, this links to your first question. Biden administration, they've already indicated they would go back to the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action. How this would affect DPRK, I would hope it would be seeing the potential, because what I've outlined isn't directly linked to the JCPOA. That was a single agreement that that included all of these gestures of we'll relieve this if you open to inspections, once you've reduced enrichment to a certain level, we'll that was all written out in this 100, what, 120 page document. What I'm suggesting in the DPRK case is step by step, by in in terms of negotiation, this tit for tat calibrated approach. But it's really modeled after the JCPOA. I mean, all the elements of the JCPOA are really part of it, and that's, I think, drawing on the ICG report as well with these different stages. So if it if the JCPOA could get back on track, and it's really the question of can the U.S. it's it's a global question. I hear it in Europe all the time. Can the U.S. be trusted? Is its word good for a period of time, or will it simply change when there's an administration change? And this is, in that sense, the Trump administration, I would argue, has been disastrous for U.S. standing in the world and for its for the trustworthiness of the U.S. word on things. So this, but I think it it could have a positive effect, if in fact, it could get back on on track. And with regard to snapback, well, I actually think, here's an argument I haven't made publicly to the Europeans, I should make more to my colleagues in Brussels and elsewhere, but that's the idea that, one, there's, of course, the question. I think I think the analysis largely is that Europe is is shrugging. It's a French kind of shrug. Okay, that's what the U.S. says, but the U.S. has withdrawn from the agreement, so it really doesn't have the right to trigger snapback. And this this is going to be caught, and we'll see whether or not it's actually taken seriously. I would argue that if you look at the details of the JCPOA, particularly with regard to to snapback, there's a stage the U.S. has skipped, and I'm surprised Europe hasn't focused more on this, because before you get to the declaration of snapback, you should go through a dispute resolution mechanism. And it's all laid out in the JCPOA. The U.S. hasn't taken advantage of that dispute resolution mechanism, which even involves a mediated agreement between the U.S. and Iran if there's a strong disagreement. So by skipping that stage, I don't think you can invoke snapback. And I think this is an argument that should be made, so I don't think it's actually a legitimate move to to challenge to say they're going to do snapback. And examples of of when it's worked in the past, actually, I would argue that a term limited suspension of a sanction is the functional equivalent of snapback, because what you're saying is you agree to suspend the measure for a limited period of time, but at the end of that, and the U.N. has done this in in cases in the past, where it's applied term limited suspensions, the the conflict party, I think it was the case with Liberia, did not agree to change their behavior, and the sanctions went back in place. So you can have snapback. We have examples of this historically. You don't need to negotiate the dispute resolution mechanism or create this exit, but of course, in the case of Iran, it was very sensitive, and it had to be negotiated very closely. And and there was there was a lot of question of whether or not Congress would go along with the agreement, and so that's why it was constructed in the agreement as it was. But I think we already have examples of of practices in the past where suspensions, time limited suspensions have proven to be not only effective, but snapback has actually been applied in some cases. So we have some of the tools already. We don't need to to create a huge new architecture to to utilize those tools.
Thank you very much for your answer. Actually, before I have your presentation, we, I think you're probably, I think the first line of your presentation, nobody likes sanctions. So many Korea on the, yeah, many Korea on the Korean, Korean Peninsula, we just understand the international sanction against North Korea can probably cause uncertainty. So but after your presentation and your analyze on international sanctions against North Korea with other policies, provide a very creative ideas. So in this sessions, we have discussed how to adopt international sanctions, North Korea for denuclearization and peace on the Korean Peninsula with Professor Beestekar. As a as a scholar, it was a fascinating time for me, and I've learned a lot of things about the effect of diverse U.N. sanctions and the effectiveness of conditions about international sanctions. So Professor Thomas Beestekar, I really appreciate with your insightful presentation and discussions. Thank you for listening, I mean, the the audience who've been watching this film. And please stay well from COVID-19 and enjoy your vacation.
You as well. Thanks to you as well. Thank you very much for inviting me to present, and I wish you all the best for the remainder of your conference. Thank you.
Thank you.